I'd like to call this village board meeting of October 15th, 2020 to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson.
Here. Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Muratato.
You.
Trustee Pocak.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Here.
Would you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have to read this announcement again. So, Governor of the state of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, restricting individuals to gatherings of 50 persons or less, and all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by this disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the October 15th, 2020 village board and committee of the whole meetings is not practical or prudent in the light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in the October 15th, 2020 village board and committee of the whole meetings, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. And this was signed by me, um, village president of the village of Glendale Heights dated October 15th, 2020. Now we... Can everybody hear?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And I can hear you. So we will go on to petitions and communications, community announcements. Mary.
All right, Ms. Mayor. Uh, the village community development department has implemented several guidelines as part of our effort to keep the public and village employees safe during the COVID-19 pandemic. When scheduling your inspection, you will be asked several questions regarding your exposure to COVID-19 and if you are experiencing any symptoms. If you have had any exposures or experienced symptoms, you will be asked to delay your inspection. If you have been exposed to anyone with COVID-19 or or exhibit symptoms prior to a scheduled inspection, we request that you cancel the inspection. You will not be charged a reinspection fee if you cancel the inspection prior to the date of the inspection. Our inspectors are taking the necessary steps to ensure the health and safety of all parties involved, including wearing personal protective equipment. Additionally, you will also be asked to wear a mask. If you have any questions regarding the inspection procedure due to COVID-19, please contact the community development at 630-260-6030. Also, would you like to join us Saturday, November the 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the mayor and village board at the Center for Senior Citizens? If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or the village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at 630-909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Trustee Pocak.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Street sweeping, parking restrictions are in effect for the months of October and November. The Glendale Heights Police Department has just completed a two-week education period by issuing warning flyers and warning citations for parking on designated street sweeping days. Mayor Jackson and the village board have recognized that due to COVID-19, families may have multiple cars on their property. To ease this burden on residents and to facilitate maintaining, cleaning roadways, Mayor Jackson and the village board are allowing residents to park on any paved or unpaved services on designated street sweeping days only. Additionally, residents are also allowed to park parallel to the street on the aprons of their driveways on designated street sweeping days only. Street sweeping helps remove leaves and debris from the streets that cause flooding or make for unsafe driving conditions. Anyone parking on village streets under designated street sweeping days will be issued a citation. To review your dedicated street sweeping parking restriction days, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org or note the posted signs on your street indicating what color zone you are in. For more information, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Muratato.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Get in the Halloween spirit this month and let us know if you're decorating your home for the haunted house trail. The village of Glendale Heights will be completing a list of homes for children and families to stop by and see some spooky decorations. These decorations should be outside of the house only. Please submit your home address and a picture of your decorated property so families can walk by and see your haunted house. Please note, your home address and a picture will be displayed on the village's website. For more information or to submit your address and picture, please email public relations department at public relation@glendalehighs.org. The village of Glendale Heights is getting into this Halloween spirit. Halloween is on Saturday, October 31st, and we would like to remind residents that trick-or-treating hours are from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Due to the COVID-19, we believe that trick-or-treating can't be accomplished safely. However, we do understand there are still concerns, and so the village is asking residents to print out a provider sign indicating yes for trick-or-treating or no for trick-or-treating, which are available on the village's website. For more information on trick-or-treating in Glendale Heights and to review the guidelines as presented by the Illinois Department of Health and Center for Disease Control and Prevention, please visit www.glandalehighs.org. We also invite children 16 and under to come trick-or-treating at Safety Town Halloween for a safe and family-friendly event. Safety Town Halloween runs from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Halloween evening. For more information on Safety Town Halloween, please contact Tanya McCall at 630-909-5459. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Clerk Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights is partnering with the Northern Illinois Food Bank for a food distribution event on Saturday, October 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Camera Park. This will be the sixth food distribution event held this year, providing for thousands of families over the last several months affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. You do not need to be a resident of Glendale Heights in order to receive assistance, and no identification is required. We ask that you please wear a face covering and remain in your vehicle. Please drive slowly and follow the directions from the staff and volunteers upon arrival. We want to thank all of the supporting organizations for their help in making sure no family or individual goes hungry. For more information or to volunteer, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. To help slow the spread of the COVID-19 pandemic, DuPage County has initiated the Answer the Call campaign for contact tracing. A representative from DuPage County may call you with some questions in regards to who you may have been in contact with while contagious with COVID-19. The name COVID Contact and the number 312-777-1999 will appear on your caller ID. We ask that you please answer this call in order to help slow the spread of COVID-19. If you have any questions, please contact the DuPage County Health Department at 630-682-7400. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Sign up for code red text alerts for emergency information from Glendale Heights Police Department. Stay informed and updated regular... Stay informed and updated regarding missing children or people, criminal activity, severe weather updates, safety threats, and other important notices. To be added to the code red text alerts, simply text GLendalePD to 99411. If you have any questions regarding this new service, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Put your carving skills to the test. Register today for the At Home Pumpkin Carving Contest. Participants will each receive a pumpkin and a box with various crafting materials. Carve and decorate the best pumpkin using all the materials. You could win up to $50 Visa gift card. Pumpkin submission will be posted to the Sports Hub Facebook page. The pumpkin with... The pumpkin with the most likes will be crowned the winner. Full contest rules are available at the time of registration. Registration is $15 for residents and $20 for non-residents. Register at the Sports Hub by Tuesday, October 20th. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Lot of pumpkin fun there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Spine chilling ghosts and ghoulish creatures are taking over Camera Park for a one-night-only spooktacular event. Reserve your time slot today for the first ever Haunted Camera Park Trail. Brave explorers will be led on a guided walk through the trail's six hair-raising scare stations. The Haunted Camera Park Trail is Friday, October 30th, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Social distancing will be strictly enforced, and all scare stations are viewable from a safe distance. Attendees will be screened prior to each tour and are required to wear a mask at all times. Sanitizing stations will be available throughout the trail. Tours will run every 10 minutes. Pre-registration is required, and a tour time must be chosen at the time of registration. The cost is $5 per person, and tour groups are limited to 10 people maximum. This event will be held weather permitting. If you are interested in volunteering or for more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Spend Halloween evening at the first-ever drive-in movie featuring the Addams Family. The drive-in movie will be held at Camera Park on Saturday, October 31st, beginning at 5:45 p.m. The fee is $25 per car. Parking spaces will be... Will allow for proper social distancing. Masks are required when outside of your vehicle. Parking spots will be assigned at arrival. Food and drinks are allowed. Alcoholic beverages and glass containers are strictly prohibited. Space is limited, so register today. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Um, next thing. Uh, we have a few proclamations. First one being a proclamation to proclaim the week of October 23rd through the 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week. Next is a proclamation to proclaim October 24th, 2020, as GFWC Illinois Junior Day and October 25th through the 31st, 2020, as GFWC Advocates for Children Week. Uh, next proclamation is a proclamation to proclaim October 31st, 2020, as Halloween Trick or Treat in the village of Glendale Heights. So if there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations.
No objections.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. I will do that. We now come to public discussion of agenda items. Mike, do we have anybody remote?
It looks like the public comment room is vacant, and there was nothing on the, uh, email box that has been set up to see public comment for virtual meetings. So there's no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, that puts us to the consent agenda. You have the consent agenda before you? What is your pleasure?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Muratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pocak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. I can't see everybody at one time, so next time I read something, I'm just gonna call on somebody, so be prepared. Okay. Uh, Consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. New business number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items number two, three, and five. Uh, Trustee Sullivan.
Um, motion to waive, uh, first readings on two, three, and five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on items two, three, and five. Number two is an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to 65 I L C S five slash 11 dash one dash six. First reading has been waived. This would be ordinance number 2020 dash 57. Uh, Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Muratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pocak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Ordinance 2020 dash 57 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to approve conditional uses to permit outdoor storage and interior above-ground storage of flammable liquids at 676 East Fullerton Avenue in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Western Specialty Contractors. It is from the October 1st, 2020 Committee of the Hall Meeting. First reading has been waived. This would be ordinance number 2020 dash 58. Um, Trustee Muratato.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a discussion. I have a question.
Trustee Sullivan.
Uh, Mayor, and boy.
Yeah.
Is this, um... This is the only thing we're approving for them? Because they had a 10-minute dissertation at the COW. You know, they had all that stuff on their trucks. And so is this the only thing we're approving?
This would be...
Director... Mayor, Director Carl Springer would probably be able to, uh, expound on that just a little bit more. Joanne?
We're connecting with Joanne.
Sorry, I'm trying to un... Everything okay? So, yes, I'm trying to unmute. I'm sorry. Um, so this is the conditional use for outdoor storage, and it does include the storage of equipment and trucks. This is the, um, facility on Western Avenue.
How come it doesn't state that?
It says outdoor storage.
Yeah.
Is included in the outdoor storage overall description.
Okay, well, it should say everything. I think. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So just, just for clarification, that was, it's on Fullerton Avenue? It's a Western Contractors?
Right.
Yeah, it's the...
I know where it's at, but the COW meeting had a paragraph that was five inches thick. So this one is three lines. So it should say everything that they want to do instead of just, you know, used to permit outdoor storage. Oh, they could store me on there too.
In the body of ordinance though, it does say, Sharon, all the things that they can store in specif... Specifically, every single item. In the body of the...
All right. Okay, thank you.
So the actual ordinance states everything that was in the paragraph that's Committee of the Hall. Correct.
It does.
Okay, I wanted to know that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Pat's got his hand up. Pat's got his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see you, Pat.
Uh, it's okay.
Trustee Muratato.
Uh, Joanne, is this more or less gonna be a rental place?
No, this is... So specialty, um, equipment, they do restoration of property. So they'll have bricks and equipment there, and then they go out and they restore property that's been damaged by flood or fire. So it's a restoration company. Uh, there's a storage yard behind the building that had been... I know, uh, Administrator Maranois reminds me what it used to be, the, the company that was there previous, OSM, is that correct?
It was, uh, OSG Tampa Die.
Sorry, I thought it was OS something. Um, so they had, they had been set up for the outdoor storage, so this area, uh, would, um, would go ahead and it, so it would be in their existing outdoor storage. But it's not, there's no rental without.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
This is also the property just east of Public Works, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And backs up to the ri...
Uh, backs up to the Chicago Blur.
The tracks, right. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Muratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pocak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
No.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Ordinance 2020 dash 58 is approved. Number four is an ordinance to accept a grant of easement and approve the plat of easement for the property commonly known as 433 through 435 East North Avenue, Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is first reading. Number five, an ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of a master pole attachment agreement and supplement for use of certain village infrastructure in right-of-way by and between Chicago SMSA Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived, and this would be ordinance number 2020 dash 59.
Second.
So moved.
Trustee Sullivan.
So moved, second. Chester said it, all right.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mike says ordinance 2020 dash 60 instead of 60.
I know, but number four, we did not waive first reading on. And that's... But that was a good catch, Mary, 'cause I almost goofed. But yeah, it should be... Trustee Muratato.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know who, uh, who's gonna answer this question. I mean, what, what is this? I mean, what are we doing now?
So, um, if it... Mayor, is it okay?
Yes.
So the, um, federal government, there's a small cell wireless regulation that is, uh, really governed by the federal government, and I'm hoping that Don can step in if I say anything incorrect. Uh, but municipalities are required to allow the, um, uh, Verizon and the other cell companies to erect poles in our public rights of way. One of the options is they can request permission to put a, put, um, attachment onto our pole, which is what this agreement is. So it's a, an agreement between the village and Verizon to allow them to put, uh, an additional pole on top of our pole on Hesterman. They, and if they do that, then they would pay the village $200 a year for that benefit. If it's denied, they have an option of finding another location nearby, and we would be obligated to approve it. So it's either on our pole, or it's within 200 yards either direction, and they put up their own pole. So it's, it's not the best. Um, Matt Holmes, one of our village attorneys, has spent quite a bit of time trying to work on these master pole agreements with Glendale Heights and other municipalities. But I don't know if Mr. Srinow has anything to add, or if that's a, a general summary?
The good summary, um, we don't, Pat, want these poles to really pop up all over the community. So as best we can, we try to co-locate them as Joanne has just described.
Okay, but...
And we have paid...
Two hundred dollars a year?
Yeah, they... They, you wanna pay...
We're rated.
Uh, they're up, up their pole, but we don't want them to put up their pole. Unfortunately, we have...
Everything okay? Busy?
Yeah. So... There isn't... We do so many of the...
What is that, $200 a year for a lifetime, or?
There just isn't, um, no, there's a term to this. Um, I, I should know that, Pat. I think it's... No, I don't want to say, but it's multiple years. It's, you know, a number of years.
All right, so I mean, we can't get any more mon... We can't get any more money out of them, or?
No, no, we cannot. Believe me, we do these in so many communities. Um, and, and Joanne mentioned... Believe me, we do these in so many communities, um, and, and Joanne mentioned, uh, Matt Holmes. He does this, he knows the absolute going rate at the highest rate that you can get for these. And that's really, in this instance, that's all you can get.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, this is to, this is to facilitate the five G networks that are going to be springing up all over the village. And I would assume that this is the first pole of many that we will be renting to them over the, uh, space of the village. So this is just the first of many.
That's correct.
Right. Uh-
The only benefit, I just to add to that, I apologize, is, um, what, uh, Matt Holmes has indicated is a lot of times the Verizon will choose to replace the village pole. So occasionally, I mean, we actually get a new pole out of it in addition to the two hundred dollars. It's, it's still not the best situation, but it's pretty much out of our ability to, uh, we exhibited as much authorization as we can. I mean, we, uh, with, with Matt's help, we've done as much as we can.
And i- if I may, Mayor, just to, uh, go back to Pat's question, as far as the length of time, the initial, uh, license is for five years. So that's the initial duration is five years and of course they have the option to, uh, renew that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I have one, Mayor, uh, uh, Mayor.
Trustee Pocak?
How many, how many poles are they going to be putting up and will there be any disruption in service?
Um, we have no idea how many poles they're going to be putting up. It really depends on their range and, and the need for the poles, what's underground and what's, what they choose to do above ground. They've been working on this, uh, for a couple of years now, so this is really the beginning. Uh, there should be no disruption, disruption according to what they tell us, but we'll, this is going to be, I think as, uh, Mr. Srinow indicated, the first of, of many, but we don't have any idea how many yet.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yeah.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash fifty-nine is approved. Number six, an ordinance approving and adopting an amendment to the Village of Glund- Glendale Heights Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. That is from the October first two thousand twenty Committee of the Hall, and that is first reading. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items. Mike, has there been any contact?
Uh, Mayor, no contact, uh, through the email box, uh, that we had set up. Again, that was posted on our website, uh, in concurrence with the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Since there is no public discussion, um, a motion would be in order to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? This village board meeting is adjourned and I believe, Mike Light, you have Committee of the Hall?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I would like to call to order the Committee of the Hall meeting for, I'm trying to remember even what day it is anymore. Jog on it. October fifteenth. October fifteenth, twenty twenty, I should know this. Uh, Ms. Clark, can you please note who's present?
Noted.
And do we have any additions? I can't see everybody, but no one did.
No, no. No, no.
All right. Um, we have no committee recommendations, but we do have a discussion regarding Restaurant, Bar and Gaming Economic Relief Grant Program. I'm guessing, Mike, this would be yours?
Uh, yes, thank you, Trustee Light. Um, I just wanted to, uh, this was presented on the COW, um, it was included, we removed it a couple of times because we weren't quite ready to go with it. Um, this is a program that, uh, staff has devised in order to try and provide some assistance to our restaurants, bars and, and gaming establishments throughout town. As you know, with, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic, the executive orders, the shutdown orders, um, the reduced capacity orders and so forth, it's been very difficult, um, on the restaurants, bars and gaming establishments, uh, in order to make ends meet. Uh, the village has done a lot, uh, to try and help our restaurants and bars, uh, as far as providing the opportunity to do outdoor dining and outdoor service. Um, we've worked very, uh, well with them, I think. Director Couchbrenner and the Community Development Department, um, have been doing a fine job in keeping those lines of communication. Uh, Public Works has supplied some, uh, barriers to make sure that the outdoor dining that's occurring in the parking lots is safe. Uh, we did that at, at no charge to our restaurants and bars, uh, in order for them to be able to have some outdoor dining and some income during this difficult time. As we move now into the colder months, we know it's going to become more and more difficult for them, uh, in order to keep business going. Um, and as the, uh, events of the last few weeks have shown, as we see the positivity rates start to increase in our region, um, there obviously is concern that in the next, uh, few weeks to a month, we may see, uh, us going backwards rather than forward. Um, we're hoping that that won't happen, um, but it, it certainly is a possibility. Um, restaurants and bars, uh, and our gaming establishments, as you know, do pay, um, quite a, a steep, um, tax licensing fees, um, to, uh, in order to open. Uh, the liquor licensing fees, uh, can range anywhere from twenty-four hundred to thirty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, each gaming machine, uh, is a five hundred dollar ta- uh, licensing fee in order to open. Um, and all of these businesses, uh, were closed, uh, for a good portion of, of this year. So what we are trying to do is offer a grant to these businesses, uh, to allow them to, uh, recoup a little bit of that. Uh, and this grant would be only for businesses that were open prior to the start of the, the, uh, COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, these criteria would also be for businesses, uh, restaurants, bars and, and gaming establishments that opened, uh, after, uh, July first, uh, when the majority of the, um, closing orders were, were lifted and it's when gaming establishments were actually able to open back up. Um, they would also have to show that there was some, uh, loss in business, which I'm sure these, uh, establishments wouldn't have a problem doing. Um, they would, uh, have to show that they were using it in order to pay, uh, expenses. In other words, rent, um, pay, um, payroll, uh, et cetera. Um, again, I, I don't think that they would have a problem in doing that. Uh, the estimated cost for, uh, for this grant program would be, uh, in the area of fifty-four thousand dollars. Uh, we believe that this grant program is, um, eligible for the CARES Act reimbursement, uh, according to the U.S. Treasury Department guidelines. Uh, it does, um, fall into the ability to be reimbursed from the county, uh, with the CARES Act money that was distributed to them, uh, on our behalf. Um, so we feel that there's, uh, this is a good option to try and help these restaurants, bars and gaming establishments, uh, that were extremely hard-hit i- in twenty twenty, uh, due to the campaign, to the COVID nineteen epidemic. Um, so we are, um, looking for your direction, concurrence, to bring this back as a resolution at the November fifth meeting. Um, in the documentation, um, that you have with you, we had a deadline of, uh, November ninth. Uh, obviously that is just an example and depending on when the board, um, provides, uh, direction and approval, uh, we will make the adjustments in the application process and the deadlines for application at that point. Uh, the one thing that would have to be done is that we would have to expend these funds, uh, prior to December thirty-first, uh, so we would have to, uh, have the applications in, uh, approved and payment made so that it would still qualify under the CARES Act.
Um, anyone like to make a motion to take care of this? Mayor?
Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur? Pat?
It, Mike, is this going to cover all the businesses in town?
Uh, this is designed specifically to cover restaurants, uh, bars and gaming establishments. Um, those, again, are the ones that are heavily licensed, um, with a, a, the expense at that point, uh, is, is highest for them. Um, and also they weren't able to get the benefit of those licenses for a period of time, uh, when they were fully closed.
Okay, but I mean, is it, is it going to cover all the restaurants and gaming establishments in town?
Yes, any restaurant that has a liquor license, um, is, is specifically what it would be geared toward, restaurants with liquor licenses, bars and gaming establishments, yes, every one of them.
Okay, we will be, we will be reimbursed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
A question for Mike and, uh, I think, uh, Don's going to need to weigh in on this too. With the agreement, we ask that, uh, the establishment and all, uh, owners of, I think it was greater than five percent, sign a, uh, promised repay. Is there any way of including, um, the, uh, conditions for the loan that in the event that the business and/or signatories file a, uh, bankruptcy, that they still, that would, we would not be released from their, or they would not be released from this debt? In other words, uh, there was a case out, I believe, in Elgin where a, a bar got their, uh, loan and distributed the money and then all of a sudden decided that they were going to file for bankruptcy and it sounds like, uh, we'd end up footing the bill for something like that.
I, I, I apologize if I misled you. This would be a grant. Um, the only time that they would have to pay us back is if they were to default on the terms of the grant. In other words, they, uh, were, failed to show that they, um, had expended the, the grant money for paying expenses such as rent, payroll, et cetera.
But if they, should they default on the terms of the grant and then decide to claim bankruptcy, is there any way of indemnifying ourselves so that we don't get stuck for the money?
Uh, I'm, I'm going to ask the, uh, Attorney Serrino if there's a way we can put that in.
I know what you're referring to, Bill, and I know what went on in Elgin. I don't know how that has, has, uh, out or resolved itself. Um, bankruptcy courts, what are called preliminary jurisdiction, they, they can take control over all of their laws and issues that may go on in a particular case. So I don't know that, I mean, we, we could certainly put something in there, um, that in the event, uh, they file a bankruptcy or a assignment for the benefit of creditors, et cetera, uh, that they would in fact have to return it. But I, I will tell you, the bankruptcy judge is going to be in charge of that.
Okay, well, if, i- if they have to, if they have to sign something like that, it may give them second thoughts about trying to do any shenanigans.
I understand.
Well, it's really not just shenanigans. They don't have the money, they don't have the money.
Um, Mike, I had a quick-
They would be filing bankruptcy if they had money.
Mike, I have a quick question. Would, could the money be used for, um, additions to the building, maybe a, a, a pop-up tent that could go outside for outdoor dining and heaters and stuff, or does it necessarily have to be for bills?
It's-
Uh, for payroll and stuff like such?
If it's an expense to keep that going, we would have no problem. We would be the arbiters to decide whether or not that that was an expense, um, worthy of, of the grant. Um, and I certainly wouldn't have any issue with that. Um, and, and trustee Smith, just to, to, uh, let you know, the, the business, I just looked at my spreadsheet real quick, um, I think the largest grant that a business would be eligible for, um, would be a, a little less than thirty-four hundred dollars. Um, the idea behind this is that to determine how much of, uh, a grant funds a business would be eligible for, uh, we looked at the number, the amount of their licensing for the previous year, uh, and we divided that in half because that's assuming a, a portion of the year that they were, uh, they were affected. So, um, so the largest grant would be about thirty-four hundred dollars for a, a business that has a, uh, full liquor license and six gaming, uh, machines.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
The other thing, Bill, um, is that the, uh, condition under number four indicates that if they're not in compliance, they have to pay it back. And I think what Mike is really saying is that at thirty-four hundred dollars, based on the spreadsheet, it's probably just not worth it. If, you know, the, the case that you're referring to, I think, was, uh, um, one of the, one of the federal programs where they got, you know, substantial dollars, like hundreds, thousands of dollars.
Right.
Pat, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say what Don said, I mean, for, for that, for thirty-four hundred bucks, I mean, that's not a lot of money for these guys that have been closed for two, three, four months. I mean, you know, if they file bankruptcy, that means they don't, you know, they, you know, they don't have it, they're done, you know?
That's right.
So.
Chester? Um, uh, how many establishments, uh, do you figure this is going to affect? Any idea, a dozen of them or more than that or less?
I have, I have that number for you. Um, it, it will affect twenty-three establishments in town.
Oh, that many?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
And the, uh, the dollar figure for each ranges from, as I said, the mo- at the top, about thirty-four hundred, a little less, um, and I think the least is about twelve hundred dollars.
I see, okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, so I have-
Is that, is that the most they could get is only thirty-four hundred dollars?
Under the program that we're proposing, yes. Um, you know, I, obviously if, if there's something else that, that the board would like to do, we certainly can look at that and, and make those adjustments. Uh, again, the pro- program that we're proposing is, is essentially looking at the, uh, amount of licensing fees that they had paid, uh, for twenty twenty a- and, uh, essentially kind of going off of that, is a fifty percent of that, that's what they'd be eligible for.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, we will go ahead and move that to, I guess, further along, I guess, right, Mike?
Thank you, yes, we'll pay that back, uh, on November fifth as a resolution.
Perfect. Um, I missed public comments. Do we have any other public comment, Mike, uh, anybody?
Sorry, there's nobody in the public comment room and I will check the emails again just really quickly and the email box is still clear.
All right. I guess all we have is adjournments.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, none. All right, thank you guys very much for the meeting.
Thank you, Mike, for doing that for me.
Thank you, everyone.